As we gather here today, let us remember the significance of this land of the Wychin people and commit to working towards a respectful and collaborative relationship with all indigenous peoples. Thank you. Adoption of the agenda. Could I get a mover in the second? Councillor Kulikowski and Merrill. Any discussion? Additions? All those in favor? Carried. Declaration of collective interest or pecuniary interest? Anyone? None? Item four, point one, delegations, presentations or petitions. We have the IRC and Peter reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. You know, this is your last meeting for this term, so I won't take too much of your time, but I did want to say on behalf of the Anubit detachment, thank you for your service. It's a thankless, tireless job, serving your community as you folks do. It does not go unnoticed by us and, you know, appreciate all you've done. I think I moved here about a year and a half ago. I won't say younger, but slightly younger fellow from Yellowknife didn't know what to expect, but like most people that moved to Anubit, you're, you know, you're just, you're pulled away by the kindness, the work ethic, what everybody does, what everybody pulls together and tries to do for the community. And just talking with some detachment members today, because I told them, they know there's an election. This is the last meeting for this, for this, for your, for your group. And they said the same thing, that they really appreciate the support that you get from the town of Anubit, from the people of Anubit. You know, we're, we're not perfect, but I think we're striving every day to, to contribute to what you folks are contributing and that's making Anubit a better place to live. So again, on behalf of the detachment, thank you all very, very much. Open any questions about the mayor's reports or any issues or concerns in general.
Any questions? Item nine, I'd certainly like to thank you as well. I think council feels the same way. The last year and a half has been fantastic as far as cooperation with IRC and vehicles. I think you gained a lot of respect in the community, certainly from me. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item five, public question period. Six, six point one, adoption of the minutes of the September 23rd and 25th, 2024 council meetings. Can we get a mover in the second? Councillor Harder, Commissioner Alexis. Any discussion? All those in favor? Carried. We have seven point one, the actions items list. Any comments? New business, item eight point one, tender award through the Crush Rock program. And the motion is, be it resolved, Anubit Town Council hereby awards the 2024 Crushing Program Tender Contract to Bubs Welding and Heavy Equipment Repairs Limited for the tender price of $1,244,200 plus GST. Did I get a mover in the second? Councillor Dedlam and Councillor Merrill. Discussion. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Item eight point two, to withdraw the proposed 2024 Community Plan Bylaw and Zoning Bylaw. The motion is be it resolved, the Anubit Town Council hereby approves the direction to withdraw the proposed 2024 Community Plan and Zoning Bylaw from the Minister of Community and Municipal Affairs Office and suspend future edits and implementation until the incoming 2024-2027 council can provide direction. Did I get a mover in the second? Councillor Dedlam and Deputy Mayor Merrill. Any discussion?
Yeah. Thank you. So just, just to clarify, just so the public understands, we're doing this because there basically isn't time to put the entire plan through since this is our last council meeting in this council, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Item nine point one, scheduled for special meetings regarding IRC hotel bylaw amendments. We have October 16th, 2024, 7:00 PM, public consultation, second reading. October 18th, 2024, third reading pending ministerial approval. I need a mover in the second. Councillor Merrill and Harder. Discussion. Councillor Kulikowski.
Just, I think I emailed everybody in my question about this item. Just some concerns that I'm having personally with the timing of it. It just feels very rushed right at the end of our term. You know, generally like kind of in this last period, we're kind of a loop council. We're not like, you know, making big decisions, pushing things forward. And I just wanted to bring that concern to the table. I'm happy to hear what everyone else thinks and I do support the item. I'm just having trouble with the, the timeliness of it. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Merrill.
I agree with Councillor Kulikowski. I think we've got time. The new council will be in place in November. And I, I'm just worried that the public consultation is going to be too rushed to be of the value it should be. I think it's a very important item. So I would also like to see that we leave this for the next council.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So would you like to make a motion, Councillor Kulikowski? I understand it would be be it resolved that Anubit Town Council hereby approves the direction to table bylaw 2742, amendments to Community Plan and Bylaw 2743, zoning bylaw, to allow for construction of a new hotel until the incoming 2024-2027 council can provide direction. You are moving and I need a second. Deputy Mayor Merrill. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Item 10, department updates. First, we have 10.1 Corporate Services update. I believe you'll be giving that one.
He is not present, so there will not be a corporate services update other than thank you for your patience with regard to other than thank you for your patience over the last year with regard to the delays in our financial reporting and budget processes. Understandably, there was a lot for our director to processing as he was new and he had a lot of work to cover over the last seven months. Thank you.
Thank you for that. 10.2 Infrastructure update.
Director Nicole Moody is not present tonight. What you will see over the next couple of presentations by the directors is our attempt to try to capture over the last three years what we have actually accomplished. Day to day, you don't see it, but when you look at it at the larger picture, a lot has been accomplished over the last few years. So this is a year in review. So I will read it out. Good evening, Mayorwood and some members of Town Council. As your term draws to a close, we want to take a moment to express our gratitude for your unwavering support and guidance. The successes of our infrastructure initiatives are a testament to your dedication to the community. Your leadership has laid a solid foundation for the future and the projects initiated under your watch will benefit generations to come. Over the past three years, our town has experienced significant growth and development thanks to your leadership and vision. From road improvements to accessional pub public facilities, each project we review today reflects your commitment to building a stronger, more resilient community. On behalf of the Infrastructure Department, we sincerely thank you for your service and for trusting us with the responsibility of bringing your vision to life. We have the construction of the new welcome center that started in 2021 and completion in 2022, as well as the boardwalk. It is a very vibrant place, a lot of benefits to our vendors having a secure and weather resistant venue rather than putting all the tents together. So much appreciated that way. Our SCADA system, which is our monitoring system for our water treatment and distribution systems, is finally in place. That was finished in 2023, so that allows our utilidor technicians to respond to any issues, drops in pressure, temperature, and just as we all know, water is life. So this just helps us maintain our water system and drainage system more effectively. The utilidor replacement, as you're aware, as we're building new utilidors, we are also attempting to replace the existing utilidor system, the old wood pilings. This has been an ongoing project. Right now about 60% of the community is done and we are going to continue to work on solidifying the foundations for our water distribution system. We know that a lot of money is invested every year into this and we appreciate the ongoing direction from this council to ensure that that happens. The whole old garbage bins are a larger, part of a larger project, as you are aware. In 2021, it's been talked around for a while, but in 2021, 22, it became a vision of ourselves and GNWT, ECC, as well as the Henderson Trappers, the Anubialet, the Wychin stakeholders to, as part of our water licensing, have a bear fence or have a fence around our landfill site. In light of that, of course, we have at least 36, if not more, bears that have been present through DNA testing at our facility. And we recognize that if there's no drive-through Tim Hortons or McDonald's, the bear's version of a drive-through restaurant, then they will be coming into town. What we've tried to do with these hall old bins is to provide the community with bear-proof bins to be able to put our garbage in, which creates a much safer environment, less garbage, less attractiveness for the bears. So this project, over the last five years, we installed some of them earlier on in your tenure and we are just finishing up with the installation this year of 35. Now we no longer have any private individual houses having their garbage picked up. It is all going into the bins. This is good practice for when the fence is up, that we will be able to again reduce the attractiveness for the bears over the next couple of years. Yes, so this slide is representing the infrastructure owned by the town of Anubit and either operated from, by the town operations or from individuals or companies that, organizations that lease our buildings. As you're all aware, we have aging infrastructure, so the ongoing repairs and maintenance to ensure that these buildings are still operating. Examples of this is the flooring, bathrooms, the envelope of the town hall that was done as energy conservation, as well as exhaust fans, new roofs, ongoing maintenance and repairs to sustain our current infrastructure. So one of the projects that was began this year, the actual implementation of the project, although this was first initiated in 2021, 22, is the construction of a solar array at the MSC to augment some of the costs of the electricity. Currently, we have cleared and we are making the ground ready for construction and installation of our solar panels. So we hope to see that within the coming months and see that to completion by next year. Another method to, one, conserve energy, our reliance, reduce our reliance on fossil fuels, as well as more financial efficiency in terms of our operations is the installation of the biomass heater at our reservoirs up top. I'm happy to say that after three years, this is complete and it has been commissioned. All of our utilidor crews are now trained on the maintenance of the biomass as well. So this will help with the cost savings to heat our water. And finally, thank you for your investment to our community.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, next we have the Protective Services update.
Director Larnan is not present today either, so I will speak on his behalf. This is a summary and some highlights of some of the work that was done with Protective Services over the past three years. So over the past three years, we have spent developing our team and building our team to be more efficient. In particular, the reintroduction of the deputy chief's position. Speaking from experience, your support to bring in a full-time and then a full-time deputy chief has benefited the fire department in terms of efficiency, the maintenance, the inspections, the operations, the training. It is well received and assists the fire chief in managing, well, the director in managing both municipal enforcement as well as the fire service. And it is certainly beneficial for his mental health as well. So that is certainly appreciated. We have also undertaken, under the Protective Services Division, more because of the expertise that was there, a review and a refurbishment of our existing IT services. That has something that has needed a lot of work in the past little while and we've actually brought it up to modernized standards and allows us to work more efficiently. And that is an ongoing project that we are working on as well. It is with great pride that we are able to say that all of the internal hires have been local, that we have not had to bring anybody in because of the strong succession planning that has occurred in this department. And we have maintained full staffing with minimal vacancies across the board. So throughout the last three years, we have accomplished a lot. Right now, we have, half of our department is trained to the National Fire Protection Standards, professional standards. And there are a new cohort that is coming through that hopefully by the end of the year, we will have additional staff trained to professional standards. In the past three years, we have responded to over 1,500 requests for service between the fire service and the municipal enforcement. That includes provision of care to over, over 100 dogs in the municipal pound. And finally, this year with the introduction of an IT department, again, we have upgraded the municipal network and IT infrastructure, including backup internet and public access, including Starlink, which has saved our bacon AQ times this year alone. Our partners, again, inside and out, we have collaborated with other town of Anubit departments to modernize the safety infrastructure at the MSC and satisfy OFM requirements. Your approval during the budgeting process to allow that to happen actually allows us to have events such as the Arctic Development Expo and larger events in the Rink by bringing it up to standard that way. We have also established Emergency Management Working Group with RCMP and AMS, again, supporting regularly coordinated activities with them. We continue to, with your support, provide fire safety education to basically every child in Anubit in partnership with East Reef Schools. And we are doing cross-training with various agencies such as ECC, MACA, Infrastructure, Anubit Gads and other allied agencies. Where your money is going, the taxpayers, that is. Since in the past three years, we have completed 10 capital projects on time and under budget, modernizing our equipment, training facilities, pound and vehicles. We have introduced a maintenance management program, reducing the demand on maintenance expenses, as well as finding efficiencies within our communications and IT upwards of $75,000. This year, we were able to refine our IT processes and our telecommunications and realized that kind of success. Towards the future, we are reviewing all of our bylaws and policies to ensure relevancy, accuracy and efficiency in relation to legislation. We are looking at solutions, as you have directed, to the downtown core curving. We have looked at expanding the dog adoption program to reduce animal control expenses and stop crime. The expansion of Town of Anubit Emergency Management Division to include exercises with partners and allied agencies and fire smart community initiatives such as fire breaks, brushing equipment. Parks and Recreation. Parks and Recreation. Director Krug.
Thank you. I don't have a fancy presentation this evening, but I am present. I prepared a statement. I've been thinking about it, so I'm just going to read verbatim for what I wrote here. Stated October 6th, 2024. Dear Mayor and Council, I would like to extend my gratitude to each of you for your continued support and dedication to our community. The past years have yielded numerous successes and I'm proud of the progress we've made together. Some noticeable differences over the last three years. One was that we changed the department from Community Services to Parks and Recreation. One of them. One of our more significant accomplishments was getting a concession operator into the Midnight Sun Complex, which we have been widely successful. We've hosted large-scale military exercises and look forward to hosting another one soon. I mean, we've done countless community events and various other calendar events over the years. We've reinstated summer camp, which was widely successful. As I mentioned last report, I think it was 145 children we serviced this summer. We revitalized community partnerships with large and small scale community groups. We've also hired local and promoted within. A prime example of that is our pool supervisor, Kate Bernicrocker. These achievements reflect our community and the quality of life in Anubit. They've also taught us valuable lessons to continue improving and finding innovative solutions. However, we've encountered some challenges over the years, facing multiple pool closures and the most recently a rain closure last winter. Parks and Rec staff were able to maintain operations at times when staffing levels were below normal. Again, added some other stuff out of here, so pardon yourself here. Thank you once again for your commitment to the betterment of Anubit and I look forward to the exciting possibilities that lie ahead. Sincerely, Steve Krug, Director of Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions? Next we have Economic Development, Tourism, Charlotte. Back again.
That is my parting gift to you all.
I understand there's some thanks.
All right. Good evening. So a little overview of the last three years. So we'll start with the Anubit Kewaizai welcoming more than around 12,000 visitors annually. And that's a nice sign to see we're arriving in town and welcoming people. Like Cindy said, the Welcome Center, the Boardwalk, as well as the Christine McCloud Memorial Community Room, were finished late 2021. And that has been a centerpiece, a landmark in Anubit. Has grown to be known and well-known. Welcoming events like the Arctic Market as well as being the actual building where the tourism economic development is happening in town. We also have different events, especially the Fiddle and Flow Festival that was actually started after COVID with a one-time grant in 2022. And that was much appreciated by the public and we successfully obtained the grant every year now. And the public just loves it with the attendance of roughly 100 people this year. So the Arctic Development as well, Expo, which changed names and in 2021, I believe, became like hybrid, like virtual as well as in person, or 22, I guess, after COVID. So just to prove that Anubit can actually host conferences virtually, in person, and we are a center for welcoming gatherings, people, conferences, professional events. Like I said, Arctic Markets, the Boardwalk has helped to host special venue for vendors, a reference again, and securing that for vendors has made a huge difference for them to develop their businesses. Summer weekly programs as well, that was developed after COVID with Arts in the Parks, Music in the Park, and the most famous one and most appreciated is the workshops, Culture Connections, as well as the month that is part of it in the summer. I want to say a big thank you for the outside and internal organizations like Town, the Town staff, as well as you members, council members that have helped and you've been asking sometimes to help for the different events. So thank you so much. And yeah, the staff and expanding and promoting Anubit as well as maintaining the bonds between the current partners that we have in town and outside of town. Finally, social media promoting Anubit. For the last three years, we've been growing our interactions with the public as well as the followers. So we have a strong image on the social media, which is mainly Facebook, Instagram. Right now, we have started LinkedIn as well to promote and make different articles. Also through conferences, we can go in to different conferences, entry shows. So this is part of it too. I don't think that's pretty much it. Thank you so much, council members, for your support and openness.
Thank you, Charlotte, and welcome back.
Thank you.
Any questions from council?
Thanks for all your work.
Okay, next we have the Senior Administrator Officer.
So I am going to start clicking, but the first thing I want to do is get everybody to pull out their thank you gifts. If you haven't figured it out by now, we do try to add some humor and we'll add some confection. And we do have that. And I believe it's important that it's a little bit of magic. If you want to take a look at your mug, Jen is just going to use a magic formula that everyone's going to. And it will be coming to shape when you, when you actually And it will be coming as sheek when you've, when you actually read what is on the back of it, and I think it goes hand in hand with what we were seeing over the last three years. I think as council, you need to recognize you saw Inuvik through a pandemic and how we had to pivot our operations, as well as pivoting your approach to how you are providing direction for the town. That was a huge accomplishment in itself, and through that, we certainly had our challenges, but we also demonstrated our resilience and our ability to do that. So once you see the big reveal, what you're actually going to say is, I survived. I survived the last three years. It's a tongue-in-cheek attempt at humor as well, primarily because not only did we survive a pandemic, we emerged from that pandemic, I believe, even stronger than when we went into it. It has forced us to take a look at the way that we do things, and also demonstrated to us the importance of appreciating what we have. So that is a little thank you gift for your last three years and helping us survive council as well.
Thank you.
You should probably add one of these, too.
We have a couple of mugs ourselves, so I'd just like to start, I'm going to be reviewing it year by year. And when we look at 2021, 2022, some of the accomplishments despite COVID, and it was actually, we were, it's like COVID put a pause on the world, but we didn't let it put a pause on us. We continued to adapt, and we continued to adapt in terms of online meetings, making decisions without this face-to-face consultation, and it was really important, you know, supporting the organization, supporting the town and our operations as we moved through this, because we had a lot of challenges. First, we're going to do this. No, now we need to change. Now the health officer says you need to do this. So it was a lot of pivoting and adjusting. So we did adapt our operations during COVID, going from online meetings in the operations. While we were doing that, we actually made some amendments to our zoning bylaw, going through that process of public hearings to allow special care facilities such as the construction. And now this was in 2021, we started this, actually in 20, we started this, we moved forward in 2021 to do this, and the transition house from the Inuviala side is in its final stages of completion as well. So your support is ultimately supporting families in crisis. So you need to recognize that you contributed to helping families out by doing so. We also constructed the, as Charlotte said, the Welcome Standard Pavilion. We also hosted during COVID, not only the COVID Hotel, but also Atlantic Flood, the flood evacuees as well, and how we had to manage, manage an emergency inside, a worldwide emergency, and the ability for us to be able to do that with your support. Pool repairs, I'm going to add it, every year we're going to talk about pool repairs because that is one of the ongoing challenges, but we continue to recognize what you needed to tell us, and you did, invest the money to the community. So despite putting the money, you know, the concerns about the cost of those repairs, you recognized it's important and continued to support it. And finally, again, even despite COVID, we had over $198,000 worth of land sales at the same time in terms of our own economic development that way. 2021, 22, sorry, 2022, 23 brought us emerging into this new reality post-COVID. One of the most startling things from that was the supply chain and the additional costs to projects that you had initially said, yes, go ahead with, and then all of a sudden the next year, when we were actually able to get construction people up here, costs are skyrocketing because of that. Again, you recognize the importance of those projects, and you continue to give direction and set our financial decision-making to ensure that those projects continued despite the additional costs, rather than reducing services or reducing capital projects. You continued to allow us to move that forward. So with that, some of the things key in terms of where your decision-making came from, the accessibility of people in town, in particular those people with disability or mobility challenges, you, when that was brought to your attention, we amended the ATV bylaw to allow more accessibility towards the downtown core, meaning before it used to be King Minia, you couldn't drive on a certain section of it, then we opened it up to allow people more mobility and the ability to get closer to the downtown core by doing that. So that was certainly appreciated that way. We began our Brainat and King Minia road improvements in 2022, getting the contracts in place. Again, it was a significant cost. You, when it was first presented, it was way over what was budgeted for. You know, based on the recommendations from administration, you all agreed this was a safety measure to allow better traffic flow around the school, as well as a safer walking on the roads for the children. So despite the additional costs and spreading it over a couple of years, you continue to support that project. That will continue for the next year until we can get that paved and the rest worked, but if not for your support, that wouldn't have happened. We also, again, the solar farm, the installation of the biomass heating at the reservoirs, the new fiber line, again, from a development side, the role, the developer approached us to say they want to put a fiber line through Inuvik. It was presented to you, you recognized, yes, we do need a redundant fiber line. That is actually almost at completion as we speak. That has been a year and a half in the making as well. Pool repairs, again, more pool repairs in 2022, 23. At the time, infrastructure had hoped that they would get resolved. They worked for a while. Now it's time to revisit that again, which I will speak to later on. And during that time, we also had about $35,000 worth of land sales. 2023, 24 brought transition. So this was a time where we had a tenured SAO, a trusted SAO who was retiring. That happened in mid-2023. During, during that time, we brought on a second SAO on an interim basis, and that transition, transitioned to finally having a third SAO within this last year, understanding again that you had difficult decisions to make, and you did make those decisions for the betterment of the community. It was the community's best interests in mind when you were making those decisions. I have to give credit to both yourself for being patient with us during this transition, but the kudos also go to the directors and the staff in being able to adapt. You are dealing with a, over the last year, you have dealt with an entirely brand-new leadership team from the director's side. Everybody is in a different position. We have directors that were not directors before. We've tried to maintain the succession planning and moving people up through the ranks, and that will continue. So thank you for your patience during that time. During that time as well, we also dealt with the threat of wildfire post-Inuvik, also supporting our other communities in terms of their managing their wildfire, hosting evacuations from Old Crow. As ashes are falling on us, we're bringing in evacuees from another place. So again, that goes to the testament of how resilient and how adaptable the Town of Inuvik can be to support other people in a crisis while we are also in a crisis. Over the last year, we also invested $7.6 million to develop Block 34 and 94 subdivision. Sorry, I repeated myself there. We, as of this week, we will have power, water, and hopefully natural gas, if not very shortly, coming forward. So the subdivision is ready for development, and we're already seeing houses being built. Again, with your support, this was a very challenging time in order to see that land sale through, despite some of the challenges, but the end result is you're going to have 60 new houses and housing available for both Wychan and Inuviala. Much needed, and your perseverance through this time is enabling those organizations and those indigenous governments to support their beneficiaries. So from my side, helping us navigate those waters and working with me to see that through is certainly well appreciated. From that, in 2023, we had $2,700,000 worth of land sales by the end of 2023, and as of today, we have over $3 million worth of land sales there. So again, your support and your direction has allowed us to do that. It has benefited the town, it has also benefited the community. An important thing, I think, for everybody was the remaining Jacquesy Place. Again, working towards truth and reconciliation, recognizing that some of these names of our streets are harmful to people, and we are making efforts to support people and managing that from that way by changing names as required. So thank you for your support to have that happen. We also, in 2024, also had a day where we were looking at revitalizing the cemetery. It was well-received by the public. It was a way to honor ancestors, as well as ensure that those places of rest are actually a restful and peaceful place. We also, in light of that, unfortunately, we have had a lot of death in the community over the last three years, particularly the last two years, to the point where we needed to expand the cemetery. So again, with your direction, we invested some funds and have expanded our cemetery to allow for an easier transition, being proactive to address that rather than reactive, going, oh, we ran out of room, I guess we're just going to back you off to the side. You know, we've actually been able to, to allow some of that to happen. Managing the pool, the pool and ring repairs to maintain operations, again, with your support, we were able to do that. More in particular, you recognize that the lifespan of that building is questionable, particularly with regard to the amount of repairs we've had to do, the perma-cross melting. You, at our recommendation, approved moving some of our funds to deal with future planning for our Midnight Sun Rec Complex. Certainly we included the repairs, but that was also the foundation assessments, the geotech or future potential placement of buildings. So again, you are planning for the next generation now, and that is certainly appreciated. Sorry, in 2023, despite all of those changes and transitions, I have two pages of stuff that we have done. We have also developed the solar farm, the biomass, the fiber line, the bear fence, as well as the, again, King Minia and Brainat Road, but also supporting the new development, not just the development up in the new subdivision, but you also took the effort to understand and support and try to facilitate the development of the office, hotel, office building, apartment buildings, transition home for women, the transition housing for recovery up on King Minia, satellite installations, housing developments like the federal housing, the RCM housing, all of those developments, as well as taking a look and, and, and understanding our zoning and community planning bylaws to see how we can fit unique and out-of-the-box thinking developments like the Nita Village, recognizing it's not a magic wand, that work needs to be put into it, and supporting that development that way as well. So you have done a lot in the last three years, and certainly speaking on behalf of the entire town, the directors, as well as our staff and our community, thank you for that direction. One final piece that I want to share with you, Jenna, if you can pull up, it's on there as well. So I had Jenna put together, because it's not just been, for some of you, not just been the last three years. So in terms of your tenure, some people in the room have been here for over two decades in terms of helping Inuvik grow. So Clarence Wood will have completed a total of 20...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Clarence Wood will have completed a total of 26 years or 10 terms serving on Inuvik Town Council. He served as Deputy Mayor from 2002 to 2004, and is currently serving as Mayor from 2021 to 2024. His terms of office are as follows. 1998 to 2000, 2000 to 2002, 2002 to 2004 as Deputy Mayor, 2004 to 2006, 2006 to 2009, 2009 to 2012, 2012 to 2015, 2015 to 2018, 2018 to 2021, 2021 to 2024, currently as the Mayor. That is a lot to say, but that is also a lot that he would have contributed, Mayor Wood, and thank you for your service. We certainly appreciate it.
That was unexpected. Thank you, Cindy. I get a lot of pleasure of sitting on the council, as you can tell, and I love the community, that's why I do it. Anyway, thank you very much for all your help. I also want to point out at this time, in 2021, past Mayor Kulakowski was the one who deserves most of the credit for that year. I only came on board as Mayor in November, so she went through the entire time of COVID and brought us through that, so she has my appreciation and thanks for that.
Next up is Deputy Mayor Miro, and Alana has served a total of 15 years or five terms on Inuvik Town Council. She held the position of Assistant or Deputy Mayor during two terms from 2012 to 2015, and again from 2021 to 2024. Her terms of office are as follows, and Jenna says that they're consecutive, so we will start from 2009 to 2024. So again, Alana, your grounded approach, your willingness to see all sides of the story, and your balanced approach is certainly appreciated by myself, as well as the rest of the directors and the staff in helping guide us through some troubled times.
Well, thank you so much. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is Councilor Kulakowski. Natasha has, will have completed 10 years. Councilor Kulakowski has chosen not to run again, so this is your, your final time in that seat. You have completed nine years or four terms on Inuvik Town Council. You served as Mayor from 2018 to 2021, and as Deputy Mayor from 2021 to 2024. Your terms of office, again, consecutive, are 2012 to 2024.
Oh. I mean, I'm in in March of 2015.
So a term and a half. So from that perspective, again, you, you led us through COVID. From a personal perspective, that is during COVID where your leadership certainly was appreciated and the willingness to, to step in and, and support not just the community, not just our operations, but the entire region. It was a tumultuous time and it was a very difficult time because all we knew was the pandemic was infectious and highly contagious and it killed people. So it was a scary time for a lot of us. It was also an isolating time. A lot of us felt isolated, working through this. But you continue to support our operations and it does not go without notice. So thank you for your service. Councilor Wayman, unfortunately is not present tonight. He's working on a project trying to take advantage of the weather while he can. He has served for 15 years or five terms since 2009 to 2024. Again, his approach to moving Anubik forward from an economic development side to support any of the initiatives that we have done throughout town, as well as his willingness to step up and just get the job done, has been a, a good driving force for this town council in terms of moving us forward. So his efforts are appreciated. And then the remaining councillors have just been on for this sitting. So I will start with, with Whitney. Again, I, I appreciate, as do the directors, your willingness to ask questions. If you did not, if you were not clear or not comfortable about some of the stuff that was happening, you, you didn't just pass it, you said, no, I have questions. You, you sought to understand. Also, your ethics in terms of understanding conflict and interest did not go unnoticed and your, just your solid approach to things. And oftentimes we hear a lot of people talking and sometimes the quiet ones are the ones who we need to listen to. And when you do speak, you are heard. So thank you. Thank you, Alana. Counselor Day. If, if anything can describe you is your commitment to the community. You are here representing the people. Again, you are, this is your first term during this time. It was a steep learning curve for you, but you met that challenge. You spoke, when, when you speak, you're speaking for the people. That is certainly what I have heard and I have observed during our time when you have brought issues, particularly with regard to those less advantaged than some. You, you do speak for the homeless and you do speak for those who struggle. And that is a voice that is appreciated and important to have on council. So I appreciate that as well as the other directors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Devlin, you certainly keep us on our toes. We will start with that because it is important to have healthy work. And you bring that sober second thought, you bring the alternative. You ask us to consider the other side of stories rather than us or council setting a direction just because it is recommended. You will question it to make sure that it is the right way to do it and that we are going in the right direction. So your comments, your thoughts are appreciated because it gives us that perspective that I think a healthy democracy needs. And that is certainly appreciated over the last three years as well as moving forward. So thank you for that. That's it for me. Sorry, Jessie. We're hiding over in the corner. Sorry, Jessie, I was looking down at the table. Counselor Harder, again, you are a, a person who takes a balanced approach to those. You, you listen and you look at both sides of the story and you are willing to change your mind if, if the other side of the story actually has some good rationale. So from a decision making side, your ability to stop, pause, think it over, mullet through, is this the best way to go forward? Or should we be going in a different direction? And your support for those decisions is, is, is a good balanced approach because you're looking at it from both sides and you're, you're making a decision, again, in a fair and equitable way. And that is certainly appreciated. It was your invisible mug and changing mug. I think that's it for me.
Thank you, Cindy. Before we go on, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the directors and their staff for their dedication and hard work over the last three years. It certainly made our job a lot easier. And council, thank you for your service. I know we've had disagreements amongst the group, but we've always come to a fair conclusion and one we felt was best for the community. Well, I thank you for your dedication and your hard work. So Natasha, I'm going to miss you, even though we had a few arguments, that's fine. It's part of, part of the job. Thank you for that. And best of luck to the people that are running again. So now we'll move on. The next item is 11.1, priorities chart, any comments?
Throw it in the chair.
12.1, council concerns, final comments from any of the town councillors. Counselor Alexis.
So yeah, I just want to take the time to say thank you to the town of Anubik staff, most likely Jenna, because I don't want to undermine her work because she prepared a meeting package before a meeting in advance. And this is a lot of organization, printing and, you know, all of that. So just thank you to all, to your work. And thank you to the director for preparing the monthly reports every two weeks or so. And then mayor council, I just want to say that it was my first time and my first term, sorry. And I enjoy working with you and collaborating with you. I know sometimes we don't share the same perspective, but I think this is the strength because we have to take all the different perspectives, work it together and then make the bad decision for the community. So thank you so much for this, this term and looking forward to working with you again and collaborating with you in the next term for those who's running again. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Anybody else? Counselor Merrill or Deputy Mayor Merrill?
So I too want to thank the staff and the other councillors and the administrative staff for all the hard work. And I especially want to thank the public, sometimes here in person, but also being able to view the meetings online, which has been a great way to get us out into the community. And I want to make sure we thank Grant Gowns, who had lead party through his term and his contribution was great and appreciating. So thank you, everybody, it's been a lot of fun. Not always.
Counselor Harder?
Yes, I too would like to thank the town staff, administration, all the directors, all the councilors. It's been, it's been an interesting term and Jenna as well, just everybody across the board. It's been, it's been, it's been really eye opening, enjoyable. Also, we have had some pretty, pretty good debates and some uproar. But all in all, just it's been an immense eye opener to see how the town actually runs. And I really, really enjoyed my time working with everyone of you and hope to continue working with you guys all again in the next term. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Counselor Devlin?
All right, thank you. Sort of following up on Councilor Merrill's dedication of Grant Gowns. I'd like to throw a cold one out for Donovan Ari, Des Marine, Grant Gowns and the late Alfred Moses as well, all of whom sat on this term of council with us. So you've been credited as well for being community builders and putting themselves forward as well. So I want to make sure that helps as well. Yeah, Cindy, thank you. You've taken on quite, quite a job just recently. But in, in seeing the change that, that administration has gone through just over this last calendar year with senior staff, major changes at senior staff level, content changes at the senior staff level. I have to say, I'm feeling pretty damn good right now about where we are and about the changes that have been made and about the direction we're in from administration and your staff. I think you have some real talent, we have some real talent here that, that certainly believe in this community, have great ideas and so I think we, we've come through some difficult times, certainly. I mean, I didn't realize, I knew that we were tailing the COVID, I'd forgotten about the wildfires. And on top of all that, we still sort of did our part to try tackling that housing problem and some of the other issues as well, I think they're successful. It's a team effort, it's a community effort. And so Masichow County to Anubik, to the residents here, everyone around this table. It's been a great three years of learning experience, certainly for me. And if, if fortunate, I look forward to jumping back into the pit of destruction and decision. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we should also mention, maybe it's true, it sure passed away recently. I've served many years on councils. Counselor Day?
I just want to say thank you, just like everybody else, my first time. And really, I enjoyed it. I'm looking forward to the next term if I elected to, but thank you for an open year.
Thank you. Counselor Kula Kowski, save the best for last.
Yeah, I'll save the crying one for last. Definitely want to echo the sentiments to the administrative staff. We've, it can't be said enough that we've had a complete turnover at the senior level of all our departments and I think it's all for the better and for the success of our community. I would like to thank council and mayor for their the support that I've had this past year, which has been one of the hardest of my life. But having you guys here, understanding when I couldn't make meetings, things like that, it means a lot to a person when they go through those tough times. If there's any community members watching this on YouTube, I'd like to remind you to go and vote on the 21st. When I ran in 2012, I lost by one vote. So your vote does matter. Get out there and vote. Make it count. I, I won't tell you who to vote for or anything like that, that's not my place right now, but I want you to get out there and vote and have part in the decision making of our amazing remote northern community that has more stuff than a lot of places in a lot of the provinces and a quality of life that is unlike anywhere else. Serving the community for these years has been incredible. It's been hard, but it's been fun. And I'm going to miss it. I am going to go have a little bit of an identity crisis after this evening. But I certainly will still be around town and you'll still see me at all kinds of events and things. So I truly appreciate my time on council and look forward to seeing what the future holds for our awesome community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. When you mentioned the first time you ran, you lost by one vote. The first time I ran, the only person I beat was the dog catcher, so keep trying. Anyway, thank you very much. We have no encounter tonight, so I need a motion to adjourn.